Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America. Since we do not operate for liberty stands, one nation, one government, individual liberty, and justice for all.
See, we're gonna do guest speaker first. We have a couple of guest speakers here. I'll go Mr. Parker first.
Alright, thank you. Hey, I just wanted to stop out and give you some calendars and some pens and lope pens and wish you a good holiday season and appreciate the business. You guys have any questions for me or anything, anything you need my help with?
Do you know?
I'll let you get the work.
Thank you. I'm gonna back up for a second. We're gonna do a roll call. Dan Van Buren.
Yeah.
Jeff Woodfanny.
Here.
Ben Huth. Here. Jenny Devall is not. Couple other guest speaker. We'll move ahead real quick to fire departments. We have to find fire contract tonight. I think we have a... Do we have any here? Hope well. Look, hope well. We have two of the fire departments here tonight. Do you guys have any questions, concerns, anything like that?
Ted, do you guys have anything, buddy? You have any questions, please?
No. I'll just give you a little... I tried to give you guys some updates of, you know, what kind of runs you've had. The year-to-date, as of tonight, we've had eighty-seven runs in our coverage area of Bowling Green. One of the biggest things we accomplished this year, and I hope the residents pass it along. We did start and put one person on, expanded our parts on eight hours from four o'clock in the evening till about ten o'clock at night until our night shift comes off on two people. For anybody that doesn't know, we have two guys Monday through Friday at Station One from eight to four, and then we have two guys at our Franklin Township Station that run all over on Saturday and Sunday from eight to four. A few years ago, when we took over part of the Bowling Green contract, that money enabled us to go ahead and put a night shift on. And that, we have two people on duty from ten o'clock at night till six o'clock in the morning, Sunday night to Thursday night. And the reason that is because on Friday, Saturday, we have more volunteers around during their not happening to go to work. And then this year, cause our run numbers dictated and showed that we weren't getting the trucks out the door fast enough because I think everybody appreciates the way the economy is. We have less and less volunteers that are able to hang out at the station or be available. We got them working two or three jobs. Their wives are working, or the wives and the husbands working, depending on what sex is on the department. But we come up with the money, and not optimal. I don't really like to have only one person at the station, but it lets the truck get out the door pretty much immediately, can get to your house, establish some care, why one or two or some of the volunteers catch up with the squad. And what we do is we go to the scene. So with that, I thought it was a good investment in our money. We have done that shift, that one person has ran ninety-five times since the first of July. So you can see how many times when we maybe delayed getting to your house because the volunteers had to run to the station, or straight up honest with you, we didn't get through. You know, that was our volunteer hour. So we try to spend the money as efficiently as we can, such is kind of what we've done this year. If you guys have any questions, you can ask me, or feel free to call me at the firehouse, contact Ben, he can get your number if you can't find it in the book. Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Hey, sir, just to like to, you know, thank you guys for everything you're doing there. My name is James Canna, I'm here in the last two months, I've had to call you guys out for my youngest son, he's got some medical issues. I'd like to personally thank you for a good job for being out there and doing your job there.
I appreciate it. I think, I think, first of all, you're probably in their territory of coverage there, so we may want to thank...
Well, I know. He's got them here, hey, so I want to... Well, we really appreciate it there, and it's a good one.
Thanks, Mike. We have two copies of each contract here tonight. We'll go ahead and sign the copies, and then if you guys would just get one copy back to us.
Yes, sir.
I know you want to take it to your board.
Yes, I'll take it. My pleasure.
We'll sign all the copies here tonight, and that way you guys just get it back to us when we can, so.
My next meeting's the second, so I'll get it signed on the second and then get it back to you.
The contract's gonna read the same as it has in the past. I do believe we'll have a little more money to come in this year if people pay their taxes. I don't know how much. Jenny didn't give a statement to say how much extra, but we give out everything, so up to date, she said, I think there were seventy-seven cents left in the account, so we give out everything, so. So it'll be split three ways, but, I mean, definitely, if you guys have any questions, problems, you guys know, you can call anytime, so. Do these real quick.
We also had eighty-seven runs out through our sheet.
Okay.
Did you?
Another time, did? How many did you have?
I had eighty-seven just in our coverage area, yeah. We're at eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight runs right now with our contract in Franklin, your contract, and then Wicking Township.
We're right about five-hundred.
Didn't have some on.
Probably should be this by motion, but you take the meeting run.
Yeah, good.
I moved that we signed the contracts.
But I, you know, in speaking of my habits, Ted, make sure, I think all the fire departments work good together, we, you know, we don't have any problems and everybody...
No, me.
Everybody's hard on the fire down here.
I don't know.
We'll do a roll call on the motion made. Motion made to go ahead and sign the fire contracts tonight. Motion was made by Jeff, seconded by Ben. Ben?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I vote yes. One-six-seven. Okay, just go to him. So, Ben, any questions for anybody? Any guests, fire folks?
Do you need anything else?
You should get both of them, get two copies.
Just get one back to us.
Alright, thank you everyone.
Awesome.
Ted, phone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. See you.
You too. Yes, sir. You too. You guys still got Sean as a fire department?
Okay.
I'm asking.
Honestly, I don't know, but, yeah, last time I talked to him, he was, but that was probably, I don't know, six months ago, maybe?
Nobody's here, so I'll take it.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Do we have any other guest speakers tonight? Tom, do you want to go now, or do you want to wait?
Oh, I can go now, that's fine. Of course, quite a few guys know me, some of you don't. My name is Sean Holmsher, I've had the house fire, I've talked to them. Everything's going good, went for insurance to take care, state fire marshal was in, and of course I didn't find Harrison, you know, of course I didn't, but my dog is fine, but he's my brother, and everybody knows about my dog, but... So I just want to thank the committee and my neighbors, if allowing me to have that camper up there for a while until we get started on this insurance. We're at some good numbers and things are looking good, so camper's gonna be up there. I can't tell you exact time, that how long it's gonna be in the driveway, but I'll know more until insurance, and maybe I'll come back down the next meeting, and then I'll know more by then of when, oh, that's gonna kick in and get to rebuild it. Fire department did excellent, excellent job. The fire didn't damage the skids of the house, so the frame, the structure was so good, so, you know, they said they didn't save one door. They like busting the windows out, but they said they saved one door. But, I don't know, I just want to thank everybody and the whole kind of Brownsville, you know, putting up with me and having that camper up there, so. If there's any questions or concerns, if you see boat trucks in there, you guys are more welcome to stop and ask, you know, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up what's going on. That's all I got, so.
We're bored, do you want to discuss it?
So the heads up is you have a camper?
Yeah, I'd say thirty-foot.
And how long is that camper gonna be there?
That's right, while they're rebuilding the house.
Okay, I know that. Are you talking year, two years?
Oh, heavens, no.
Four years, six months?
No. I would say probably within six months, as soon as the, as soon as we get on, get turned on the insurance.
Give him a blade.
Very good.
What's the address?
Fifteen hundred and two, Main Street.
They usually give you back a year, I think, well, most of the time. Cars did. Yes, well, cars did, it's a long transition.
It is, this is the fourth week, and the insurance called me today, we were supposed to give me a touch at four-thirty, but here it is, you know, thanks to the week, and I'm sure I ain't gonna get hold of it until Monday. That's just what I'm thinking, so.
So we're looking at a year, possible?
It better not be a year.
And it's, it's considered a construction trailer which you're living in during the construction of your home, which the board needs to approve. They approved it for Mr. Vermillion. His home had the same incident, so you might want to ask the board if they would vote to allow you to keep that one year during the construction of your home. And there is no permit fee for that construction building. Construction trailer. Okay, so you might want to come back and ask them now.
Oh.
You know, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we allow... Sean, what's your last name?
Ronnie, we're at school together.
I forget your last name.
Holmsher.
California.
H-O-M-S-H-P-R.
I'll make a motion that we give Sean up to a year to live in that, the temporary trailer there while the home is under reconstruction.
I'll second.
Sean, I will get with you, okay?
That's fine. I'd leave my number in case you ever get, get hold of me. Seven-four-oh, four-three, seven-seven-eight.
Yep, we'll do a roll call, but motion was made by Ben to allow Sean to stay in the temporary trailer while the house is under reconstruction for up to a year, seconded by Dan. We'll do a roll call vote. Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Alright, thank you, Tom and Sean.
Thank you.
Any other guest speaker?
Yeah.
The correspondence. Jenny had one thing here, it was from Phyllis. It's any changes of address to go into the little township books that we give every year. There isn't even an address in it. If anybody wants to put change of address, phone number, anything like that in there, need to let her know, I'll leave this here, so if anybody wants to change anything, please note it on there so we can, we can change it. Communicate if I have. That's all she had.
In case she goes...
Alright. The report, safety. I think everything's pretty good on safety.
Yeah, I think everything's...
Danny's got the Ford in good shape. Lalo's made it all.
Truck's up and running?
Yeah, everything's in...
We'll be out there soon.
Ready to go.
Very good. Fire company, we already did the contracts. Zoning?
Update on the property on Laurel Hill, which the owners were the Wes's. Planning commission contacted me. The lot split has been approved. Now they have to complete it by contacting their attorney and having the deed written up for those two lots. Also, our aerial photos, we're having difficulty getting in the air due to the weather, so we'd like, I would like to know if I can extend it possibly through December. Hopefully not, but my timeframe, I'm requesting an extension through December.
Do we put a timeframe on it?
November, you said, you wanted it done by November.
By the end of November.
Yeah, but we don't know if that's gonna happen with the weather.
Right. I'll make a motion that we extend the timeframe for the aerial photos to go another thirty days until the end of December.
I'll second it.
Do a roll call. Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
No.
Ben, yes? Alright, on that lot split, so everything has been approved for you guys.
You need to call, you need, one of you need to call yourself, because that was inaccurate. You need to call. You need to call the planning, or the engineer, or the recorder. You need to call them.
So it has not been finally?
You just need to call them, because she has bad information. You need to call them.
Ben, I sent you copies of it.
You just need to call them, okay? Call yourself.
Planning commission's...
Well, I'm asking, is it done? Has it been recorded?
I'm not gonna say no. You call them.
Well, I'm not playing games, we went on with this so long.
Just call them. Her information is not correct. She's saying it's not done, this isn't done, this isn't done. I said it was completed, other than the drawing up.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, well, none of that's correct.
Is it complete? Is the lot split complete?
I'd say ninety-nine and a half percent.
Has it been recorded? Yes, no?
As soon as I get it through the mail.
Okay, so yes, it has been recorded, then?
Yeah, but I don't know where she got that. It's recorded through, so I can go get a copy of that deed, is what she's saying. What does she need?
Thank you. I appreciate it. We appreciate it.
So she's gotta go get a copy of our deeds?
No, she just said she wanted to get a copy of it, she didn't say she...
Why does she need to?
Anybody could get a copy of it.
She need to get everybody else's.
It's all a record. But thank you, if that's finished, thank you.
I've done everything, just under a thousand dollars, you could have to, okay?
Well, I'm sure Barb will do a follow-up to make sure. Is that correct, Barb?
Visitors' bodies.
Barb? Are you gonna do a follow-up to make sure everything's completed?
As soon as the planning commission tells me the deed has been filed.
Very good.
They have one year to file it.
Alright, thank you.
When is the year off?
Talk to your planning permission, boom.
You're supposed to know.
I gave you the answer. I don't think it's today.
Alright. Is that it under zoning?
That is it under zoning.
Boards and appeals, offensive plan, park committee. Had a couple things handed to me from the park committee here. The rental list and some money that was turned in for the rentals in November. There was five rentals in November. Two of them were free. One of them was a hundred-and-twenty-five dollar, and two of them were twenty-five dollars. That's up to date, and then from now on, from today until December twenty-eighth, they have booked eleven rentals. It'll be pretty busy in the next thirty days. State's on here, a few things they need, and then also, says no park committee meeting on the nineteenth of November because not enough members to have a meeting. Next meeting will be January twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Okay? Any questions or anything like that?
The park, let's, while we're talking about that, we oughta go ahead and get a water softener put in over there.
We, several years ago, we allocated the money to it.
Do we need to make a motion to just get it done, or?
We already, I know we already allocated the money.
I know we did.
Put one in over there, so. You just want like Sears or something like that, or just want to get one like that?
I don't know, whatever will do the job.
Alright. I know myself was here for the park committee, Dan was here, there was nothing posted on the door, I know that, so I wanted to be aware of that, but they had canceled the meeting. I was unaware, we sat down here for four, five minutes probably, waiting for somebody to show up, nobody showed up, I never got a phone call, so I'm pretty disappointed about that, that there was no notifications or anything like that, that it had been camped.
It mixed twice.
Probably more than that. Alright, you know, twenty-first, seven o'clock. January twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
Have we not talked about park committee?
If you have something pertaining to park committee, sure.
Well, I'm gonna tell you why this park committee is a joke.
What the day was at?
The twenty-first, or less than.
It's usually on Monday, I think, okay?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I'm gonna tell you why, every time you guys have a park committee, nobody shows up, they cancel the meetings, they don't do anything. Why do you have a park committee in the first place? They don't do nothing. Nobody takes care of this building over here. They're supposed to clean it every time they use it, they don't do that. It's just aggravating for the township to come in, people come in and have to clean up before we use the place. And it's a joke. They don't, the park committee, the people to the park committee don't do anything for the park. So I, why don't you do away with it? You didn't have it years ago, why you got it now? They don't do anything. I mean, somebody's gotta do something, because this is getting difficult. Like I say, they don't have enough people coming to the park committee to have a meeting, so why even have them in the first place?
I attended an event at the Park Community Building, and one of the problems I found was we couldn't use the restroom. That's an issue. And nobody notified anyone there was a problem. And if there was a problem with the restroom, they should have notified the people who had the event. And there was quite a few people at the event.
I spent half my time working on the community, getting it to work, Jack and I did.
During the event?
During the event.
This is wrong.
Just to have it, just to have it working. I know a water softener is gonna help that, it's gonna take time, but just like the dinner parks, they're shot because you don't have a water softener, and plus, it's ridiculous. The park committee's supposed to take care of this stuff, and they're not doing it, because that community building ain't supposed to be under their control with it. Well, nobody does anything, and these dresses, it's getting a little out of hand.
We'll look into, you know, we'll, they had set up some guidelines, I don't have them here with me tonight, of what their duties were gonna be and things like that, so let me look into that. I haven't seen any of the park committee members, I haven't seen the committee together for several months.
Nobody shows up. They're like, they're just sitting over across the street there and don't do nothing. Our park committee president won't even come over to our meetings to hear this habit thing going.
And Ben, might I add that obviously the park committee president does not keep a very good calendar, because of all the controversy we have with the situation with the community campus.
That works to contain some of it, and all they do is work for you. You gotta take care of it. No, no, all we do is pay for it.
Well, I put a request for the copy of the calendar for October.
We clean the building.
I still have a copy.
Hey, quiet down.
Well, I sent a certified, she signed for it, first part in the document, and I still have nothing.
What else you gave her there? Is that other stuff from her, too?
Yes, stuff for rentals, so. But no response back on that?
Nothing.
I, I wanna add that when that's questioning good people's standing and integrity, I think that should be brought immediately to the table. I don't think that's something you should remember, that, because that's, that's, that's wrong.
And I did make a total copy of everything that was put on the volunteers' Facebook page about saying the park, didn't even get no part of it, we were having that event until she saw it on the calendar, and then you and yourself, that one of our members called you, and you were the one to talk to Barb and reserve that building. We had already dates for that. When I went over and talked, and talked to Barb, she showed me the calendar, there was no name on that calendar, and suddenly a name appears on it, and it appears on Facebook. And I have talked to her attorney about the whole situation, that's why I sent things certified mail to prove that I have sent and requested, and I'm not letting this go. You know, our name, as a proof, is put out there, but we bumped somebody when we did not, and those records were falsified. She wants to go to court and testify, she didn't falsify, that's fine, we'll push that to you.
I suggest somebody else take the calendar over.
Usually it's made on just one person's account.
Yeah.
Well, I think we should talk to Barb about it first.
I'd like to get the whole park committee together to talk to him, but...
January twenty-first?
Well, they were supposed to be there November nineteenth, so.
They were supposed to be there the month before that.
What records is it that you're wanting, because Jenny, she turns everything over to Jenny, doesn't she?
You requested a copy of the calendar.
Yes, I requested a copy.
They should need a day.
No, I, is that thing working over there now?
Yeah.
You know, we gotta do is get the calendar, make a copy, and give it to her.
What do you think? I know there's been some controversy about it, you know, just...
Well, look how long it took them to finish, well, they didn't even finish the...
No, they're not a fact, or that should have been done a long time.
And I have copies of a blog that they had finished, or that they'd written in, Vicki Ferguson did. Two years ago, they were gonna finish that project, then it was gonna be done last time. Then it was gonna be done last time, and then it's gonna be done last fall. So another year, it's taken three years. Why?
How many hundred bricks we thought we didn't need?
Now, that should have been done right when the flagpole was put in.
Okay.
Okay.
You know, why it don't, working on the concrete, get it, do it, and be done with it.
Well, it's actually too bad, I have a penny of the German out Laurelville Road, but for Veterans Day on the Facebook page, I posted a picture of a flag that's on my road. It is absolutely disgusting because it's ripped.
That's my flag, I'm proud of it, I fought for it.
Yeah, riptide flags does not honor a flag.
Climb out there and replace it then. Just climb out there and replace it.
Sure, you're ready.
Your worked up.
Alright, we're, we're gonna.
Get back to park committee, when they had to sail, well, they even rented a forty buck, because they knew that bathroom couldn't work. I believe you two knew forty bucks.
I don't understand that, right.
Just trying to take care of the whole place and look better.
Yep.
Well, I replaced all those parts in there less than a year ago, it was last winter sometime, so this water softener might be a big help, I don't know.
When did you look at it again, too?
The, if that whole assembly's all caked up again, that's what the problem is, because all those parts are fairly new.
Yeah, we'll have to get new ones to go back in.
I mean, we'll do a softener, and stuff like that, but, I mean, what do you guys think about? Do you wanna have a special meeting with the park committee, request that they come, or?
Yeah, let's just do that, let's have one there.
If you have a special one, you probably have to get with Jenny, I don't know if she needs to advertise or not, but.
Yeah, we can advertise it, and have the park committee.
Can't wait till the twenty-first, then it'd be an extra expense to install.
It's two months away.
Yeah, we'll, just get one.
You gotta rent a lead-in bond in December, you probably be getting sick from that.
Yeah.
So you plan on getting this water softener relatively soon then?
We already discussed that.
Well, with it eleven times booked.
You remember, right, Jeff, I gave you one, you didn't want it. Right on you.
It's up to you, I'm just, you know, if it's booked eleven times and we've got issues, we need to do whatever we can to get it.
We'll, uh, work on that. We'll make a motion, then Jeff go ahead and take care of the installation of the water softener over in the community building.
Oh, so.
Got the same real, same thing he's gonna do about when he took care of the.
Uh, when you, uh, when you, uh, I don't think I was on the board when you did this motion for this water softener. So what, you know, what's the budget? What, what was done, what was said, or decided? I'm assuming that was two thousand ten and eleven, because I don't recall it happening.
I don't know, but I'll make another motion to purchase a water softener and get it in.
But you already did that, you said, I'm just asking, uh, just asking some details of what you decided you were gonna do. How much money was allotted at that time, or if it's just open to do it?
Well, let's put, let's put an amount on it.
Well, I don't know what they.
I think if I wanna, I see yours for less than a thousand, I know that, I, I don't know.
It's gonna take it.
We have, I've seen it for like six, a decent, so that was a few years ago.
Well, if it takes a thousand dollars to put one in, that got covered.
Is that what you wanna put amount on it?
I.
I'd, I'd say less than that, I.
Well, I mean, not to go over a thousand, I don't know.
It should have been, sorry, that's set up over there, so all you gotta do, just purify the water from that building, you don't have to build it over here.
Right, right.
So you don't need the brush. Test the water.
Yeah, you gotta test the water, test it.
Yeah. That's what they sell, no ask.
Oh, okay.
You take my.
Take one out of here. I don't know.
Well, I made a motion to appoint Jeff in charge of installing a new water softener in the community building, and I'm putting him in, and I cannot exceed a thousand dollars.
You wanna get quote, do you want quotes on this, or you just want me to handle it?
Just get it done.
Put a time number on it?
Next week.
The motion was made by Ben to appoint Jeff in charge of installing the new water softener in the community building not to exceed a thousand dollars, seconded by Dan. Roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
I'm also gonna buy new parts for the toilet, too, but we don't wanna put them in until after we fix the problem.
You're gonna have to fix it.
Oh.
That, before you fix the water softener, because they ain't, they're working.
They ain't working.
You gotta, you're gonna have to spend money, it don't cost that much, but.
No, them things ain't that expensive.
Say it's not, it's not functioning at all?
No, uh-uh, it's not working right.
Okay.
Needs to do what's in, you have to retest it again.
If it's purchased, it's here, our account is at Lowe's, so I'm sure they sell.
Lowe's sells water softeners.
So.
Okay, if they can sell water softeners, Lowe's will be fine, too.
You're not concerned about quotes, just go with that?
No, I see a thousand dollars, yeah.
Could you spend a week just going around trying to get quotes?
If you buy a Canetico or something like that, they're like three thousand, so we're not gonna go that route, I know that. Back to the park committee, do we want to set up a meeting to meet with them?
Yeah, I'd say we'll set up a meeting, uh. We'll see what.
Let's do one, we're gonna have to set a yearly record retention meeting, let's do one on, uh, December tenth, it's a Tuesday.
Okay.
Eight AM?
Yeah, that'd be fine, eight AM in the evening.
Yep.
Eight.
Eight, eight AM in the morning, eight in the morning.
Uh, in the morning?
So we can do, we'll do dual-purpose meeting. We have to do a record meeting. We do a records meeting at eight, and then we can do the park committee meeting at nine, if you want.
In the morning?
Yeah.
Well, while I'm thinking of some of the, for the park committee, probably be better in the evening.
I'll fall and wake you up, Dan.
Well, no, it's, it's not for me, just maybe they're working or whatever, is the reason why, might be better if it's in the evening.
I don't think anymore.
I mean, I don't know, you know what I mean?
Right. Do you guys want to attend that meeting? I'm asking you guys, anybody in here wanna attend that meeting?
I'd like to attend.
I can't in the morning.
Would that have a morning or evening meeting?
Evening.
Evening would be better, I would think. Just make it eight o'clock at evening.
Do it eight in the evening?
What if we did it next monthly meeting and just did it before this meeting, set it like, uh, six o'clock or something? Just do it on the same night as the monthly meeting.
We could do that.
Be more apt to be able to get people to, to be able to come.
That'd work.
Guys alright with that?
When's your monthly meeting?
Last, last Tuesday of the month, the twenty-fourth of December.
No, it'd be the thirty-first.
Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong. Yeah.
Thirty-first, New Year's Eve? You want our New Year's week?
Yeah.
Do you wanna reschedule a monthly meeting, a week in advance?
Yeah, we'll talk about that, I have that for news.
I did, too.
Because then it'll fall on the twenty-fourth, but we'll, we'll come back to that. So let's, did you wanna make a motion to do it, the, the, an hour before the regular meeting next month?
Is it gonna be on the twenty-fourth?
No, we're gonna, no. We'd rather do, I think I'd rather do a meeting on the thirty-first instead of Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, whatever you wanna do.
Alright. Well, I'll make a motion that, uh, we're gonna have a special meeting with, um, the members of the park committee. On December thirty-first, it's the same night as our regular business meeting.
We're gonna leave our, our regular meeting the same night.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll hold the park committee meeting at six.
You know, there's nobody gonna come, that's New Year's Eve.
Uh, New Year's Eve doesn't start until five minutes before midnight, come on.
Unless we change the meeting to Monday or something.
If you're gonna be there, that'd be your part.
Yeah, that'd be a day earlier.
I'll tell you, that's not a good day to have.
That would avoid the holiday.
I'll be here keeping the waters. Everybody drink, I'm gonna. I'll bring the firewood. I'll bring the firewood.
Is that what you wanna do, man? You wanna do it on?
I, I'd rather just keep it on thirty-first, on Tuesday.
That'd be fine.
Well, I made a motion to have a special park committee meeting on December thirty-first at six PM. And we'll have Jenny notify all of the members on the park committee to be here.
That'll work.
You want a second?
I'll second it.
Do a roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Sure, yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Everybody marking the calendars, please attend.
So we don't need to take any action on the regular meeting that we were lucky with, was?
Anything else on the park committee, anybody else have anything park-related, community building-related, nothing like that? Unfinished business? Uh, trash is on here, I don't have any updates. Last time I talked to Amy, she had sent a letter, it came back to her as a non-address, she was working on finding an address, a correct address to send a certified letter. Last update that I have from her. Any other unfinished business, Dan? Jeff, do you have anything?
No.
New business? We stated that we're gonna keep the meeting the same in December, the thirty-first, seven o'clock, for the regular business meeting. We need to hold a yearly record retention meeting. I'm gonna make a motion that we have a, our yearly record retention meeting on December tenth at eight AM.
That meeting's for you and Jenny, basically, just find out if she can come.
I wanna make sure the board's okay with that, in case anybody else would like to attend.
Have you already talked to her, you know?
Yes, she said that'll be fine.
Alright, did you move the motion, Herb?
I did.
Second it?
Do you second it? Alright, we'll roll call vote on having the record retention meeting, December tenth at eight AM. Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Any other new business?
Nope.
Anything else? Nothing else?
Make sure we got everything here.
Now, it gets back to unfinished business, did you have a copy of that stuff that I requested from you from last meeting?
Already gave it to you.
I didn't get the one copy here.
Did you all get that thing working, too? The other night, I didn't, uh, last, there was a email that I was gonna get a copy of. Did you all get it working at the, after the meeting, because I came back down and didn't get it?
Did you leave that copy of that stuff when you came back down?
Yeah.
Because it wasn't here.
At this point, you're gonna need to contact, uh, it's her name, Margie, at the co-op, if you want anything, because I don't have any more copies.
I'll contact Amy, she'll contact you.
Margie, her name's Margie at the co-op.
Yep, so you don't have a copy of it, is what you're saying?
I've left it for you twice now.
You have not left.
I don't have any more copies.
Have you seen anything in here, Dan? Have you guys seen any paperwork here?
At the meeting that I didn't attend, I came down, I made sure that each and every one of you had copies, and you guys actually signed a check to reimburse me for the copies.
I requested a copy from you last meeting for the, actually, wasn't even for this meeting, it was sufficient amount of time, which would be seven to ten business days. So, if you don't have a copy for me.
I've got nothing more to say on the matter, Ben.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that, I'll be contacting Amy about that, that I would like to have a copy of that from Jeff, and.
So is, is the machine working? Because I still would like.
What machine do you speak of? The printer?
The printer, yeah. After the meeting, I was supposed to get a copy of an email that was a legal correspondence to the zoning state.
I'm not aware if it's working or not, I, I do not know.
Okay, it was at the last meeting, she had it, and I had it in my hand at one point, I guess.
I do not know that. But if you don't have a copy for me, and you're not gonna get a copy for me, then we'll find another avenue, so.
You probably charge us for it.
Alright, if you don't have anything else on new business, we'll move on to public comments.
Me and I go first?
Unfinished business. You kinda skipped, or, no, excuse me, new business.
How did we do new business? We have new business.
Our friends would like to request the use of the community building for, uh, that last Monday for two thousand fourteen.
The Friends of Bowling Green Township?
Yes. And we would like to start maybe doing fundraisers, so that we can, um, purchase the signs that we have discussed for the interns to Bowling Green Township.
You wanna request the building just for the, the Monday before the meeting, just next month?
Well, and then depending on if we have a fundraising donor or something like that, if we have a special occasion. Which we are kind of discussing, we may bring that to you next month, let's forget it then, yeah.
Do you want to do, it's not just next month?
No, no, to, for two thousand fourteen.
Right, you want to do, every, two thousand fourteen, every month?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either.
Do you have any questions, Jeff? Problems with it, anything like that?
This the same night you had these last three months, same year?
If you guys do like a, like a fundraiser, would you know like a month in advance?
Oh, yeah, we would know a couple months in advance.
So you could bring it to the meeting unless.
Yeah. There'll be advertisement, newspapers, everything, let me know, so we can have loads of, and that possible. And, and we do wanna give the funds to Jenny, you know, so she can set up an account, uh, where the money would specifically go for our project.
Right, if you guys, alright, raise any money?
We need to make a motion.
Do you have any problems with it?
No, I don't have a problem.
Well, I'll make, you guys make a second.
I'll make a motion, you have done one that Monday.
Every, every month, month?
Yeah.
For the year two thousand fourteen.
The third Monday?
Monday before.
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
Actually, Monday before the trustee meeting. I'm trustee, yeah. Township, is that it?
Last Monday before township.
We have it also for December, Ben, if it's not running on that Monday. Which usually on the Mondays are never run.
You made a motion, Dan?
What's that, what's that date, because there are a bunch in December.
Thirty, would be the thirtieth, if we have our meeting the thirty-first.
To allow Friends of Bowling Green Township to use the building on Mondays before the meeting for two thousand fourteen.
Is that booked?
No, no.
Okay.
Got a time on that, too, on the motion.
You guys always have a meeting yet?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Alright, well, I'll second the motion. Do a roll call, Dan?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
If you guys are gonna do like a fundraising event, or just come back to the townships last month, you know, the meeting before. Definitely. Any other new business?
What about these Christmas bazaars and stuff they have over here, it was messing up. Who gives any money for that? Does the township give any money for heat, electric and stuff, or what?
The rental was free, I know that, it's, it says that on here. I, honestly, I didn't take part in, in booking that, I don't know if there was any kind of fees for vendors to set up, or anything like that.
There should be, it's a profit, they're making a profit.
No, no, I, I can vouch for one, absolutely. No, no, I, I can vouch for one absolutely no profit whatsoever. It was to build a church, now I can tell you that it was to build a church.
Okay.
They need to get no money.
You're talking about over here?
Over there at that building?
Yeah.
The Christmas bazaar.
Right.
All that money that the people that I knew was to build a church. Everything, everything was donated, it was on the tables, and it was to build the church at Hopewell.
Why does Hopewell bring everything up here to this? Why don't they do it down there?
I live in the township, I have a church there.
I don't know if we really had a say in the, in the election.
God don't have no township, Jack, God don't have a township.
Of course he'd be penalized though.
Alright, come on. But I don't know that answer to that, Jack, I don't know if they took any, I don't know.
Once a year.
Do they pay the township, do they pay the church over here in the summertime fifteen, twenty dollars?
I, I don't know, we can, we can ask the park committee, um, when we have that meeting.
When they have their meeting, and over here, they turn the electric and gas on, and I don't think they pay nothing.
Once a year is the only time I've ever seen the people I know there. Once a year.
Over here.
People I know that was there from Hopewell Church was one time a year.
We can ask them that, at that park committee meeting. Any other new business?
You do anything about that, bud?
Yes, sir, I do.
What, what do you know?
Well, if I say anything, somebody's gonna get mad.
Okay, you don't need to.
Nobody, nobody's gonna get mad.
We're listening.
Nobody's gonna get mad. No?
Oh, he's talking about the new business of the church.
What church?
Alright, well, we're gonna move on to public comment.
Can I go first?
Go ahead, Dave.
Can I come up front here so everybody can see me, I'm gonna be heard?
Wish you wore your shirt.
No, I don't know, I shouldn't say. As a recorder, one so I can be heard, Ben?
That one there?
Yep.
Okay, uh, my name's Dave Skinner, and, uh, recently, uh. During the election, I had a sign in front of my house, and there was a grammar, there was apostrophe S put in front of the S, okay? And, uh, this was up there for two months and maybe two weeks before the election. Uh, Jeff Corpeney put on the internet, my name, that I was an illiterate. I would like for you to define what the word illiterate means.
That's not accurate. You're saying that I've done something that I, you know, it's not accurate.
What's not accurate about it? It was on there, put it on there by you. I hope this camcorder is on, cause I want this camcorder too. So you may wanna answer, uh, define illiterate?
I already told you I didn't, I didn't call anyone illiterate, so.
Well, I want you to know, I went to school to my senior year and quit, later on, I got my GED, I attended M A T C. Where I was on the dean's list, and I want you to know, an illiterate is someone that can't read or write. I can read and I can write. So, you know, that was very, very rude for you, I mean, I'm.
You're saying that I did that and I didn't, Dave?
Well, I'm gonna keep, keep, continue there, and then you can, uh, we, uh, address me.
Okay, I've already said all I need to say, Dave.
Uh, cause you ain't got nothing else to say about it, because you know you're wrong, and I want this one recorded, because this is really rude. I tell you, I worked my whole life, I can't work no more, cause I'm disabled, I got medical issues, and, and if, if someone called, if, if I see someone illiterate, that can't read or write, he can't do none. I'm gonna come to that person and try to help them, I'm not gonna ridicule them on the internet and put them down. I think that is very, very wrong of you, Jeff. Very wrong. So I hope, I hope you put what I'm saying on the internet without editing it, what I said, cause what I'm saying, you did, is absolutely wrong. What was your point of doing this? I had a sign, Ben Huff, Ben Van Burn, I felt those were the best candidates, and I voted for them. It took you two months, or someone you know too much, that knows that there's an S, a corner in front of that S. And you took pictures of it and put it on there. I think that is very wrong, very wrong for a trustee that's supposed to be behind the residents and people, to call them an illiterate and put it on the internet. That's all I've got to say, Ben, Ben, Jeff.
She was on the other foot, you accused me at Walter's auction of taking your stuff, see?
We're not gonna pick on each other.
Okay, but he did.
We're not gonna pick on each other, yeah, alright.
Yeah, same thing.
Do we have any other public comment tonight?
I make a motion, pay bills.
I just, I wanna say congratulations, Dan and Ben.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jeff, you got a work.
There's a contract sent. Said the contract.
It wasn't that way, I changed my sign.
You said, are you, you, you're borrowing my stuff?
Was the second meeting on the bills?
Yep.
Does anybody know about the telephone for the voting inspector?
I look at, you gotta.
I thought that was unfinished business.
Right, I thought you were gonna get a price on it.
Yeah, the last meeting. Two meetings ago, maybe we were sitting here, told you about the price, the minutes.
Somebody was gonna write the price.
Everything on it, and then the next meeting, we, we asked you about it, and you said, I have to check into it.
And somebody said they would get a price, print off on what the price was.
It wasn't decent, I, you said you were gonna check.
Well, I apologize if it wasn't you.
You said you were gonna check into it.
We forgive you.
Uh, no. Ben, you did, you did not say you would check into it, you were waiting for the response.
Oh, I did, yeah.
From the resident that brought it up.
No public comment, no, we're gonna move on to pay bills, Dan made a motion to pay bills, I second. Hey, Davidson, don't feel like the one on radio, he called me a liar. First check is four, three, two, seven, Danny DeBor, eight hundred ninety dollars, seventy cents. Check number four, three, two, eight, Benjamin C. Huff, six hundred twenty-two dollars, nineteen cents. Check four, three, two, nine, Daniel Nelson Van Burn. M N C O, check four, three, two, three, fifty-five dollars, eighty cents for advertising. Four, three, two, four, auditor of state, four hundred ten dollars, auditor. What's your job? Four, three, two, five, one hundred eleven dollars, forty-eight cents, those companies, supplies. I have a list of other stuff she needed, I don't need that, what else does she need? Football leader, big pal. Big pal, forty-fourth leader, not there. Do you know what this stuff drives up, is this mostly supplies? Those, hundred, hundred and fifty dollars. Four, three, three, two, Public Energy Consortium, uh, two hundred fifty-eight dollars, thirty cents. Four, three, 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 forty-one dollars, ninety-eight cents, map, auto parts, paint for pal. Four, three, three, four, fifty-seven dollars, twenty-nine cents, metal industrial steel supply, metal for dial. Is there something you're aware of? Multimillion district here.
Yeah, it's new for the snowplow.
Is that what the fence is for?
Yep. Fixed and painted on.
So we got in touch with this company, Karen?
Figured the township can lease pay for the steel.
Forty-three, thirty, Jack Richard Hedges, one thirty-seven, eighty-two. Forty-three, thirty-one, Robert Watkins, one thirty-two. Six, Jack Richard, sixty-two, eighty-one. The population spent with consideration. Adjusted bank balance is thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine million. Call me, John, everybody be safe on the way home, go to get back, everybody be safe.
He should, he should.